In order, today is Monday, the 29th of July. This is the special city council meeting for the city of Los Alamos. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Graham Mahia.
Here.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here. Okay, on the agenda, we have a short agenda. So, on the consent calendar, I guess all, oh, we can deal with all at once? Or if anyone wants to pull any of these items, we have three items on the consent calendar.
Can I pull the item for the SRO, just to make a comment?
Okay, so we'll pull item A. Any other items? Okay.
Move the balance.
Okay, move the balance by Councilmember Edgar and seconded by Councilmember Murphy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, okay, so 5A.
No staff report. I just wanted to say that Councilmember Edgar and some of the other councilmembers, even though I was pushing, pushing, pushing last time for the SRO, showed a great amount of wisdom to work with the school district, to have indemnification going both ways. I was really concerned that we were going to be left without an officer at the school, so I was really pushing, and I just wanted to say to all of you, you made the right decision, and I didn't want it to go without giving you the, I guess, respect you deserve for, you know, holding out. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, so is there a motion to approve 3A?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Mahia and seconded by Councilmember Murphy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, special order of the day, we have item 4A, and staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a sit-down session. We appreciate your indulgence in allowing us this study session. It gives us an option of explaining something that's very technical in an environment prior to it becoming a public hearing, and we appreciate the opportunity to do this. We hear many times that, is this, why is this the first we're hearing about this when it's at the public hearing stage? So, we thought we'd back up, allow a study session option prior to a public hearing, and then prior to the second reading. So, eventually, you'll see this topic three times. Lisa Cranitz, our Assistant City Attorney, has been working diligently on this process, both through the Planning Commission and now through the City Council. She's going to walk you through a very, probably complicated issue, and she's going to try to simplify it through the PowerPoint presentation that she's giving you tonight.
Good evening, thanks. So, what we're discussing tonight has been referred in part as SB 2. But it's more than SB 2. It's essentially the housing policies that you're required to implement. The city's required to adopt housing policies relating to transitional housing, supportive housing, residential care facilities, emergency shelters, single-room occupancy units, parking standards for studios, and affordable housing, and reasonable accommodation provisions. What is mandating that the city adopt these policies? These are coming from two basic sources, which is state law and federal law, and then the city's housing element, the last housing element that was approved. The city council, in its housing element, had set forth certain policies that it was going to do, and based on those policies, HCD, Housing and Community Development, gave approval to your housing element and certified it. The first step, when I got to working on these ordinances, was to look at the existing definitions. So, before we changed the substantive provisions of the municipal code, we first had to go in to revise the definitions to match state law in certain circumstances and to remove inconsistencies in the existing code. And you've all received a separate handout that's got definition changes on them. A large part of what we did was to remove the sub-definitions. Like you had, there previously was community care facilities, and under that came emergency shelters, sober living, transitional housing, and a number of other things. However, community care facilities are state-licensed facilities, and emergency shelters, sober living, and transitional housing, and maybe some of the others, are not state-licensed facilities. So, we cleaned up those definitions, and you do have a red-line version of where we made the changes. So, SB 2 was adopted in 2007, became effective January 2008, and it largely related to emergency shelters, transitional, and supportive housing. The purpose of SB 2 was to clarify and strengthen the housing element, to ensure that local zoning encourages and facilitates types and uses of housing and limits the denial of housing to address critical needs of the homeless population, and also the other special needs categories that are addressed in the housing element, elderly, disabled. And the city included these requirements in your housing element that was approved by HCD. So, the first new definition is emergency shelters, which means housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons that is limited to an occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person. No individual or household may be denied emergency shelter because of an inability to pay. That's basically the state law definition. State law requires that you must allow an emergency shelter by right, no discretionary permits, and at least one zone of the city. There must be sufficient capacity to accommodate the need for emergency shelters and at least one year-round emergency shelter. Your housing element that was approved provided that there, on any given night, you have 121 persons in need of emergency shelters. And state law allows you to provide objective standards for the maximum number of beds, off-street parking, the size of the intake areas, the proximity to other emergency shelters, length of stay, lighting, and onsite management. Currently, in Los Alamos, you do allow emergency shelters in your CO zone and your R3 zone by a conditional use permit under the heading of residential care facility, and you have CASA Youth and Precious Life in the city that already are emergency shelters. With the proposed amendments, emergency shelters will be allowed as-of-right in the PM zone for 20 or fewer beds, and I won't, that is per development, not 20 or fewer beds total. By adopting this ordinance, this provision, the ordinance, you satisfy Housing Policy Action 3.1. In addition to making them as-of-right in the PM zone, going to continue to allow them as a CUP in the CO zone, and allow them by CUP in the PM zone if they go above 21 beds. And the reason for leaving them in the CO zone is you don't want existing shelters to become non-conform use. The idea wasn't to drive out any of your existing shelters that are currently in the Additional requirements in Los Alamos will be for resident manager. Emergency shelters will have to be 300 feet from one another. The maximum length of stay will be six months, and off-street parking will be provided at one space per 500 square feet. The next category we're dealing with is transitional housing, which is buildings which are basically configured as rental housing developments, but they're operated under a program requirement that call for the termination of assistance and recirculation of the assisted unit to a new recipient at some point in time, which has to be at least six months, and then the standard provision is generally two years, that they're between six months and two years that somebody can stay. And supportive housing is housing that does not have a limit on the length of stay, that's occupied by a target population, meaning maybe the elderly or the developmentally disabled. You generally have one type of target population in your supportive housing, because the supportive housing also provides services for those individuals. So, it wouldn't make sense to have a whole group of different types of individuals. You'd have to provide too many services. When I say "you," the city does not have to provide any of this housing. "You" is meaning nonprofit or somebody who comes in and develops it. The city only has to make the zoning available. The city does not have to provide the emergency shelters, the transitional housing, or the supportive housing. Right now, state law requires that transitional supportive housing be permitted as a residential use in the zone, and that it be listed as such. So, regardless of what the Los Alamos Municipal Code says, or any other code of any other city, general or charter law, in California, transitional and supportive housing is already allowed as a use in that zone. The only thing HCD asked the city to do was to specifically call it out as a use. And when transitional supportive housing goes in, it can only be subject to the same standards as other residential development in those same zones. Right now, transitional supportive housing are currently allowed in the CO zone by CUP under your designation of social services facilities. And again, CASA Youth and Precious Life both provide transitional supportive-type uses, and they'll continue to be allowed in the CO zone by CUP. As I just said, state law already allows these in your R1, R2, and R3 zones, but now they're going to be specifically called out as such allowed use. And calling it out as an allowed use satisfies your Housing Policy 3.1. A residential care facility is a state-licensed facility providing 24-hour-a-day, non-medical residential care to persons residing on the premises who are in need of some assistance, guidance, personal services, protection, supervision, and training essential for sustaining their daily life or to protect the individual. These facilities are licensed by the state in their non-medical care. Again, state law currently provides that residential care facilities for six or fewer persons are already an allowed use in all residential zones in the city. And I've put in a picture of the Rossmore Sunshine Villa Residential Care Facility for the elderly, which, as you can see, is just basically a single-family house, and it has six beds in it. So, currently, the Los Alamos Code allows residential care facilities for any number of individuals, be it one, or eight, or 20, by a CUP in the R3 and the CO zones. Under the proposed ordinance, residential care facilities for six or fewer are going to be specifically called out as an allowed use in the R1, R2, R3 zones, which will satisfy Housing Policy 3.4, and then in the R3 zone for seven or more by CUP. They'll continue to be allowed there by CUP. There was a requirement that said in the R3 zone, they had to be in a single-family house, and that requirement has been eliminated, because there really aren't single-family homes in the R3 zone, and therefore, while the ordinance was allowing it, it really wasn't because it didn't exist, yes?
Could you very quickly, for the public's benefit, we're making reference to the CO zone, the R1, the R2, the R3. Can you give a brief description of what those zones are, so that if people are following what we're saying, they have some idea?
Certainly. R3 generally, in our city, is generally the apartment row area and Old Town West. Old Town East is R2, and so is this track down here. There's a pocket of R3 right there.
And Stephen, those are usually like apartments and such, right?
They're high-density zones for apartments.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to give.
Yeah.
Okay, and the last new definition is single-room occupancy, which means units that are small, one-room units occupied by a maximum of two people that either have a shared or private kitchen and shower facility. They're rented on a monthly basis, typically without a deposit, and they're basically an entry point into the housing market for extremely low-income individuals, people who were formerly homeless, and disabled persons. Government code doesn't provide a definition of SROs. They just require that you address an SRO as part of your housing element. So, the proposed ordinance provides for an SRZO in the PM zone with a conditional use permit. They'll have to be sized between 150 and 300 square feet per room. The rent will be at least a monthly basis. There'll be a maximum of two persons per unit. A kitchen is to be provided onsite. Each unit has to have a private toilet and sink area, but they can have a bathing shower facility that's shared per floor. And laundry facilities are required. A resident manager is required. They'll have to be 300 feet from another SRO. There's a parking requirement of one space per unit plus two spaces for the manager, and this ordinance will satisfy Policy 3.6 of your housing element. So, what really changes between what the existing Los Alamos Municipal Code provides and the fact that state law already makes certain uses allowed in the residential zone, and they're as-of-right right now, regardless of what anybody's code provides throughout the state, these changes really aren't as major as they may seem. It's more a matter of now calling out, instead of the overall-reaching community care facility, of calling out specifically an emergency shelter or transitional housing. So, what we have, this is the code, the chart rather, for residential uses, and right now, transitional, supportive, and residential care facilities for six or less will be permitted, and all of these are permitted by state law. The residential care for seven or more will continue to be allowed by a CUP, and that's already allowed by the Los Allos Municipal Code. So, there's really no substantive change from the current existing conditions outside the fact you're calling it out now in your code, as you agreed to do in the housing element. On the non-residential uses, transitional uses are already allowed by CUP in the CO Supportive housing's already allowed by CUP in the CO zone. Emergency shelters for any number of beds is already allowed by the CUP in the code, and again, that's under the major heading that it currently falls under. So, what is really new is allowing an emergency shelter of up to 20 beds as a permitted use in the PM zone, as state law requires to provide one zone where it's allowed by right, no discretionary approvals, and to allow emergency shelters of more than 20 beds by CUP in the PM zone, and to allow SROs by CUP in the PM zone. Other changes that were agreed to be made in the housing element relating to making housing more affordable and available is your relaxation of parking standards. The R3 code currently requires two spaces for the first two bedrooms and an half-space for each additional bedroom, or other room that could be used as a bedroom. So, if you had two-bedroom and a den, you'd have to have two and a half, i.e. three spaces, because you can't put in a half-space. Studio unit would require two spaces. With the change in the code, studio units will only require one space per unit, and affordable housing units will require one space for each studio unit, one space for each one-bedroom unit, and two spaces for two or more bedrooms. And that will satisfy Housing Policy 4.4, and the thinking behind that is that the affordable housing, people who qualify for affordable housing do not have cars in the same ratio as people who are buying market-rate housing or renting market-rate housing. The other change, and this will be part of a separate ordinance, everything else was in one ordinance, and then there was one additional change that we realized needed to be made, to implement federal and state law, which is to provide a reasonable accommodations in housing. And federal and state law require that persons with disabilities have a right to reasonable accommodation from a land use regulation, a policy or practice that will prevent such person from having an equal opportunity for housing. It's essentially giving people who have disabilities a variance without having to make variance findings, because there would be nothing unusual about, necessarily, about the shape of their property, the topography. It's a need for them to do it. There was a question on the city attorney list serve today, asking about, somebody wanted to put in an elevator on the outside of a house, in a two-story house, to provide access for a disabled person, and the question was, can we impose a discretionary review? Can we make that go under our site plan review? And the question was, can they make us do it? And probably, yes, that's a reasonable accommodation to take it out of the discretionary. Reasonable accommodation requests are fact-specific, so I can't sit here and tell you tonight on a hypothetical whether it necessarily would or wouldn't qualify for reasonable accommodation, but other examples are, there was a case where somebody who had been diagnosed with AIDS and was in the hospital needed additional time to respond to code enforcement notice to clean up the property, and the city said no, and the court said yes. Allow in addition to a home, even if it violates development standards, and that could be the elevator we were just talking about, or it could be something like allowing a ramp in your setback areas to allow wheelchair access. Or to create a larger home, a larger development on the first floor. Certain cities have mansionization-type ordinances, or I should say anti-mansionization, where they limit the square footage of a house, and they say, I need the additional square foot, because my wife is now disabled, can't walk up the stairs. We need to make a bedroom downstairs and add a bathroom. There are four categories of people who can file for a reasonable accommodation, and there are four categories of people who can sue for that. That's a disabled person, the representative of a disabled person, a developer of housing for disabled individuals, or providers of residential care to disabled individuals. There are certain findings that you still get to make. It's just not, I need a reasonable accommodation, great, no matter what. The request has to be made by one of the four listed groups. It has to be necessary to provide an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. The request will not impose an undue financial or administrative burden on the city, as defined by law. The request will not result in a fundamental alteration in the nature of the city's zoning program, as defined by law. So, if somebody wanted to come into what's a residential area and put in a whole bunch of maybe nursing homes, that could change it to a commercial type of zoning instead of residential. The request won't fundamentally alter the character of the community, as defined by law, including substantial increases in traffic or parking. And the request will not create a direct threat to the health, safety of other individuals or damage to the property of others. So, if somebody said, who lives on a corner property, says, I have PTSD, and I need an eight-foot fence in my front yard, side yard setback, and I need a zero lot line adjustment because I need to be completely enclosed, but now there's no line of sight of traffic for people pulling out, you don't have to approve that request. The proposed ordinance provides that, who will decide will pretty much go with whether or not there's another discretionary permit involved. So, if somebody's just coming in for a building permit, and there's no discretionary permit involved, we've drafted it so the community development director would decide. If somebody was coming in, and they also were seeking a variance for a non-related reason relating to disability, or a conditional use permit, the Planning Commission would decide, or the Planning Commission could decide and appeal of the director's decision, and then the City Council would decide if this was coming in with a zone change, general plan amendment, or there was an appeal of the commission's decision. Questions came up at the Planning Commission regarding, what do you do with an improvement that exceeds your development standards, and how do we make them remove it? And this was, the idea was discussed by the Planning Commission. We have redrafted the ordinance to provide that one, and this was in the existing ordinance, the accommodation is necessary for another disabled person to have an equal opportunity to use the housing unit. So, if I'm selling my house to someone else who has the same disability as me, then the improvement could stay. And added some more specific language that it could be removed unless the removal of the improvement is not achievable without significant structural changes that would impact the safety and soundness of the structure, or the cost of the removal would be at least 20%, 25% to the value of the structure. Otherwise, they're going to have to remove something that violates your development And the big question, nobody likes being bossed around by the state as, do you have to do this, and you really don't have discretion? So, what happens if the city fails to implement? Of course, those standards that I, those uses I already talked about, that state law provides transitional supportive housing and residential for less than six, those come in anyway, because state law already provides that. But if you don't, if you fail to implement, if any city fails to implement what is required by your housing element and the state law, you result, you have a non-compliant housing element. And with a non-compliant housing element, you can lose eligibility for a variety of state-funding programs, dealing not just with housing, but funding for parks, funding for your infrastructure, and receipt of CDBG funds. You cannot qualify for an eight-year review for your future housing elements. You'll have to continue to review every four years, and you will not be entitled to the streamlined review. Right now, the HCD's adopted a new program that if you have put into place all the programs you said you were going to do out of your previous housing element, and your previous housing element had been found compliant by HCD, and you get to check all your little boxes off, you don't have to do your housing element for eight years instead of four years. But you're automatically out of that without a compliant housing element. You may be prohibited from issuing building permits for other projects. Somebody can come in and just basically say, you don't have a valid housing element, your housing element's tied to your land use element. If you don't know where you can put emergency shelters, you don't know that you can let this use be, this land be used for something else. And it's not just somebody who wants to put in the emergency shelter or something, who could use this. This tactic, like SEQA, can be turned into the sword instead of a shield of saying, I have a compliant housing element, of saying, I don't like, that development project has nothing to do with affordable housing, but here's a glitch in your general plan, so therefore, we can stop all types of development in the city. And you cannot deny emergency shelters in any zone, and the burden would be on the city to show the adequacy of the housing element. So, if you don't assign them to a zone, then somebody comes in and wants to put in an emergency shelter, they get to do it basically anywhere in the city. And if you wind up in court, you're going to have to show your housing element is adequate, which would, in a sense, be impossible, because you haven't provided the zone. So, who could sue? The persons who are eligible to reside in the developments, homeless people, low-income people, disabled people, elderly people, the housing rights advocates. people, disabled people, elderly people, the housing rights advocates, developers of housing, and someone, as I just said, who's opposed to a completely unrelated project on the ground of an inadequate general plan. And the kicker is that costs and attorney's fees can be awarded against the city for people who are enforcing housing element laws and reasonable accommodation requirements, but even if the city prevails, they don't get their costs and attorney's fees. It provides for costs and attorney's fees for plaintiffs who bring the lawsuit. And that pretty much wraps it up.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions, Councilmember Edgar did have a question, he wants some clarification.
Yeah, now that I've seen your presentation, yeah, it's a full disclosure, I'm on the cost-of-use shelter board, so it seems to be a really important part of this. Do I have any sort of a conflict voting on this or having an impact on the road?
It's a nonprofit, it's a local.
No, you don't.
Okay, so the council, questions of city attorney staff on this side? You want to go ahead?
Sure. I have a couple. The part I'm trying to get my mind around is, I guess, the planning commission's done a great job, from what I can see, I've been following it through the planning commission, so the objective tonight is just to educate us and to get general feedback, but it seems like our planning commission has been taking this on, you know, just so that we're consistent with the mindset of the planning commission. Would you mind just sharing directionally where the planning commission is? Are they advocating this position that you've shown? Do we have any concerns so that we're going the right way?
The planning commission have that one outstanding issue that Lisa talked about, about somebody abandoning a project that was approved using reasonable accommodation. They were frustrated that the city is stuck with this room addition that doesn't meet code, or this ramp that doesn't meet code, should the ownership change on a property. We think we've addressed that in this amendment. They didn't see that paragraph. We brought that only to you after the planning commission forwarded it to the city council.
Yeah, from my perspective, they've spent a lot more time than we have getting closer to this, and I did come to one of the planning commission meetings, and I spoke as a resident, but my concern was really geographically of where one of the zones that would have been placed into. Can you just address the Parkwood issue once and for all?
That, originally, I think the first draft ordinance talked about putting a lot of these uses into the R2 zone, and after discussion, after the planning commission talked about it, we went back and we looked at it, and that's why it's no longer in the R2 zone, and it was moved to the, in the one case, the CM zone. Let's see if I can get back to the, there. So that, the emergency shelters, we decided they would be better in the PM zone.
Which removed the concern?
Of the residents who lived in the R2 area.
Very similar to a big contract that the city had, just to kind of make a point that seems like it's, we're going the same path here, is that they came back and said that, you know, you need to accept a potential contract modification down the road, we brought it to a vote, and we said, no, we don't accept it, go away, trash contract. To be able to have a perspective where we have to allow zoning, does that mean that we can vote it down, even though we allow it? You know, we, the zone is a document. It allows people to come in and ask for permission, but it goes through the commissions and eventually ends up at the council, or depending on the threshold, different path, but, you know, is this basically saying it's a unilateral decision path that doesn't have an area for deliberation?
If the council, state law requires that you designate at least one zone for the emergency shelters, which again, when you look at the chart, that's really the only new thing that is being provided for by this ordinance. If the council didn't want it in the PM zone, they could pick a different zone, we could go back to the planning commission with that. If you don't want to put it in any zone, then you're back into all those slides that I just gave you, and what happens if you don't do it, and you wind up with a non-compliant housing element.
Okay, so it's subjective, it can be, the code will be updated so that it's permissible, still requires a process to be evaluated and approved by a governing body, either the commission or the council?
Not for the emergency shelters of up to 20 beds, that's permitted as of right. That's what the state law requires, one zone, as of right, no discretion. It's just subject to those few standards that state law said we could do.
Okay. Can you go down to one of the slides that you had, just to kind of keep building on this point, that said that relaxation of standards? It's the parking item.
On the parking standards? Okay.
Okay, so, and again, this is, I'm not trying to make a rhetorical point, but I'm struggling whether we're trying to advocate for homeless shelters and ability to accommodate, or whether we're trying to protect the quality of life within Los Alamos. We know we have a parking problem, we know we have a traffic problem. Are we, kind of just because we want to show that we can do it, trying to relax these standards to meet the law, or are we doing it because we're just trying to have a better defense if we have issues down the road, that, look, we tried to do something here? Because this just seems counter to the rest of the general plan, where we would actually give up requirements. And I'll just go one step further, is if, again, theoretically, we want to be good citizens and be able to provide a balance for all people in our community, but the reality, if we don't necessarily want this to sprout up anywhere, we need to be a little bit strategic and try and find where are the pieces where you can stiffen up the policy that makes it a little bit tougher. This seems like one of those areas, and I'm just not sure why we're relaxing, and maybe I don't understand it in the context of a strategy.
The housing element as a whole is designed to make sure that the city provide housing for all different categories of people. I'm sure you're aware, you get housing assigned from the RENA from four different categories, including now very low, low, moderate, and upper. On the housing element that was proved in 2009, adopted December 2009, one of the things HCD had noted was that parking requirements can impact the feasibility of residential development, especially for multifamily units. So to ensure the city's parking requirements are not a constraint to supply and affordability of residential development, the city was to review existing parking requirements and reduce the number of spaces for affordable housing projects, and then reduce the number of spaces for studio one-bedrooms in the R3 zone. So that was what the city committed to do when it adopted the housing element back in 2009. That's part of having an adequate housing element. This isn't, this isn't really for homeless shelters. This is for affordable housing-type projects which are moderate income and below. So you're talking about projects that teachers and police officers.
Yeah, I mean respectfully, I'm trying to use a non-confrontational item to make a point strategically, is that there's one thing as complying to a state mandate or federal requirement, depending on how you look at it, and there's others about making it a little bit tougher and prohibitive. This isn't one of those areas per se, but it's hard for me to read in the strategy to what is elective that we can do, and what's mandatory that we have to do. And are we, are we opening up to try to be so accommodating? You know, me personally, I'm not trying to be the model of, you know, SB2 implementation. I want to be the minimum of that implementation, so it doesn't affect our quality of life, right up to the point that it's not legal, I'll just say it. And so I'm struggling with trying to find, what is our strategy here going through? Because right now, the people that are getting involved in the community in this, outside of the commission, because the commission, I think, like I said, completely has her mind around, but they, they only see the bad sides of this, and they want to know what we're trying to do to make sure that we're protecting the quality of life. For example, just directionally, but the cost-of-use shelter, you know, it provides transitional, I think you said, is, you know, so do we get credit for checking off for that? You know, behind Mayflower, we have transitional or help, I can't remember the term that you used, supportive housing, where we have older folks that are living in there in section housing that's actually subsidized by the state, they get services or minimal services to help them day by day. Are we getting credit for that? I, I'm like Jerry, and I got to be honest, when we're going through the different zone numbers, I'm not a planning expert, but I'm having a hard time digesting where specifically in our city, and are we taking account for all of this stuff? For our city, our side, we actually do a lot of very unique stuff, and I'm just struggling. I don't want to go overreaching, I don't want to be short-sighted, but I can't follow what, you know, what our strategy is.
Councilmember Edgar, if I could help you with this slide. This slide doesn't change market rate housing unless a studio apartment's built.
It's Steve, right here. I'm not on this slide, I'm on the strategy, but.
Okay. Regarding parking, if that, if the issue is, because we know that's always been an issue in Los Alamos. This creates a relaxed standard for studio units or affordable units. Somebody wants to build an affordable development in the city, and it comes in with studio units, one-bedroom or two-unit, this offers them relaxed standards. Market rate in apartment row, market rate in Old Town West, or market rate in Old Town East would not have relaxed parking standards under this new code, only if they built studios. Studios are not the most marketable units in Los Alamos because of our schools, so you don't see a lot of those coming across our desk. That is just the parking issue. Regarding the biggest part of what you said, I don't know if we have an answer that's going to satisfy the city council on this. We have a need to be compliant, we have a need to get an approved housing element, the state requires that, so we have chosen the path of least resistance on most of these sections of the code, of trying to fit it in a way that's palatable for Los Alamos's small size.
So, so not to be misinterpreted, but let's just, since up here, we get to look at all angles. Jeff Stewart, he used to use the word "slow roll." We could take the slow roll to become compliant, it could take six or eight years. You know, that, that isn't a strategy, but just, you know, there's a lot to look at, we need to get, make sure we're doing it right. Okay. There, another strategy would be that, you know, when we're going through this process, we could actually decide to be non-compliant. We could. And, and then you go, well, shoot, how much CDBG money do we actually get per year? Is it worth that? And then your last point with the dollar signs was, well, then they could use it as a lever. But, but again, if you look at the, except for the lever thing, we don't have a tremendous amount of development in the city, so how scary is that scenario? And then when you look at the different areas that they could turn out the spigot, we don't get a lot of state funding other than law enforcement and CDBG, and very little there. So noncompliance is a strategy, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, let's set the table. Has staff looked at the total cost, other than the potential legal ramification of a developer suing us because they don't like the way we've shut down a project theoretically?
No, staff has not looked at the risk factor here. We have not looked at how much we would be sued. I don't think it's a crystal ball any of us have.
How much CDBG money did we get approximately last year?
Tom, we used 100 last year. There was one year where we had over 200 approved, and the previous year before that, over 100. So we waffled between 2 and 100 every time that we're approved.
Okay. Mayor, that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question relative to.
I had a question relative to history, a little bit, and going back to, it was either Huntington Beach or Newport Beach that was having an extreme problem, when the housing rates had fallen with a lot of people coming in and buying up homes within the residential area, within the R1 essentially, and then creating those into essentially halfway houses, where people would come in, pay a fee, be in a bedroom, in kind of what was designed here. They went to the state, and there was legislation that occurred. Is that part of what brought this about, or is this to kind of refine some of that? Because their issues were, their issues were quality of life and the fact that there would be four or five on one street, and they would have people that were, for lack of a better word, alcoholics wandering the neighborhood, that again impacted the quality of life. If I understand this correctly, this really isn't going to open up a door to that unless we get interest in letting it happen, and, and then it would depend on availability of the stock, which right now, isn't an issue, as you explained, because of the, of the school district and the type of buyer for the house is not really focused on this particular area. I'm not sure I asked a specific question, but.
Most of SB2 laws were developed before the Newport cases, and they were implemented prior to that. This challenged some of those laws and the strength of them, but this, these laws were developed before that. Most cities are adopting these laws now because there, it's the next round of the housing element, and they need to be compliant with the promises they made in their last housing element. And that's why you're seeing this on agendas from March to now on various cities doing that. But I think that, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, and much like what Troy discussed, I think it's more a factor that what we're doing is, is essentially completing a checkoff box to protect ourselves down the road, that there's still some latitude, that at some point, you may come back to us and say, we're kind of, without any, any options here. Somebody comes in and wants to put in a 20-bed shelter, as an example, I can't see that as being profitable, beneficial, if you can find it to begin with, find this space, unless they're going to come in and tear down something else to put that up. But as you've kind of explained, this isn't going to be something that we're going to be faced with, that we can see to any real major extent. Am I right in that assumption?
I think the economics of Los Alamos lends itself to that, but I also understand the other point of view, that those are the economics in the city today, things can change. And you don't want to be providing a roadmap, and I think that's some of the frustration I'm feeling, is a roadmap for those types of uses to come in.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I, I too agree with what Troy was saying, and if you go to, in your staff report, Section One, Planning, page nine, it's the fourth paragraph down, on line number four, and it starts, "The only exemptions permitted in a non-discretionary zoning requirement are where a jurisdiction demonstrates their homeless needs can be accommodated in existing shelters," sorry, I don't have my glasses on, "in existing shelters, or where the jurisdiction meets all of its needs through a multi-jurisdictional agreement." So I guess my question is, along with Troy's, what, is there any kind of a, a formula that's used to decide how much a city is expected to allow with regards to, say, you know, emergency shelters or transitional homes? Obviously, we want to provide care for those people who are elderly and, you know, families that are homeless, that are really trying to get back on their feet. Our concern is, or at least my concern is, is I don't want to see this change the makeup or the face of our city, and I want to protect our residents. So that paragraph right there seems to lend to what Troy was saying. So is there, is there a function or a formula that says we're in compliance?
What you have to show, I mean, if you were to say no to an emergency shelter, would be that you have emergency shelter space for 121 individuals.
And that's based on our?
That's based on the number that was in the housing element you adopted.
Okay. And can we adjust that number? How was that number arrived at?
It took the county-wide population, the county-wide homeless, and then applied the same percentage to Los Alamos. I think it was like 1%.
Okay. So my problem with this is, Los Alamos has always been a community that's been very tight-knit. As you can see by the nonprofits that we have here, we've already taken it upon ourselves to provide for those who are in need. And to me, having to absorb an overflow from neighboring cities merely because the state mandates it, I have a problem with that. And when we, when we addressed this some time ago, regarding, I believe it was a letter that we were agreeing to send, I voted no, because I, I don't agree with this. I don't think that we should have to just summarily accept this from the state. And I think what it was, is I was saying, we need to push back, this is an item we need to push back on, we need to send a letter out saying- This is an item we need to push back on, we need to send a letter out saying we don't support it. I, I agree with Troy. I think there are some other things, while the Planning Commission has taken this on and done a much more thorough process with regards to the changes that should be made, I think that there are other things, other steps we need to take, need to take to protect our community, and those would be some of the ones that I was concerned with most. So I'll go ahead and push it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Richard, do you have any questions?
Really a comment. I'd just like to see the staff work to comply, but just barely, I guess, would be to sum it up. And, you know, we have, obviously, we're going to have a few more meetings, maybe if we could have some discussions along those lines as to how to be in compliance, but that's it. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess, so my questions, on the, I forgot where I was going to go, the, the count of 121, so you said that's derived, derived from a percentage based on what the county has?
But it was based on Los Alamos's population.
Right, which, then they apply a countywide metric to Los Alamos, which may or may not be...
The county, the county didn't do that, I think the city's...
The fair share of the county's need is averaged out to all cities based on the population. We're not absorbing Cypress. Cypress isn't absorbing us. It's a fair share need based on our, our population that we have here in Los Alamos.
But, but...
Our 11,000 plus.
But, but I think, just for argument's sake, if there's a city in the county that has a higher incidence of homeless folks, that could, you know, tilt the numbers, or bias the numbers, that we would have none, you know, I guess an undue burden on us.
And absolutely.
That may not be in reality.
And the counter, our, argument is, they have services, so they bear a bigger burden than we do.
They have ser, uh, I don't follow the logic.
County certainly usually has county services, like social service agencies and those kind of services in their downtown cores.
But I'm talking the city. So let's just pick a neighboring city, Villa Park would be a good one. Right? You know, they have some number that gets applied to them, based on the same formula.
Correct, and they would probably...
And I would dare say they probably have a lower number than we have, in reality. So yet, they would have to still do the planning for this type of a situation.
Yeah, they will have to adopt the same types of code amendments that we do.
Okay. The other, the question on, what is at risk? The, the, the cost of, of the risk of not passing it? I guess, I'd like to understand some of those numbers, if you were to tally those up for the past five years, on community block grants, any other state, or state funding that we get. Could we have that number just provided to us?
I would say loosely, it's about 500,000 for CDBG only.
Over five years?
Over the last five years.
Yeah, and we'd have to do a, a four-year housing element, instead of an eight-year housing element.
But what's the cost of doing a housing element study?
Um, usually about $30,000.
Because we pay our...
We, we usually pay a consultant, this year we're doing it in-house to save that money.
Okay.
But they, but the, that, you won't get a housing element that's approved by the state.
Yes, yeah.
If these things aren't addressed.
Okay.
Do you get many parks and infrastructure for this?
Are we mandated to accept that homeless number, or is that mainly just a formulary guide?
You could come up with a new housing element.
In other words, if we were to go out somehow and do a head count, like they've done in Los Angeles, to try and really get a handle on what they have, we're not, in adopting this or accepting this, we're not arbitrarily accepting that figure, that's just a guide figure that, that's in there. Is that correct?
It is a guide. It's not a mandate. It's a guide.
Okay.
It's almost like a pressure release valve. When you hit it, you've met your obligation.
Okay, so besides the community block grants, then, any other, I guess, city manager, any other funds that we might have at risk?
State parks, it said, also state park funds, if we did any of that.
It's applicable to Los Angeles.
But...
I don't know if that to be true. The other risk is, is allowing these uses to go where the state allows them to go, instead of where we want them to go.
Okay. All right, understand. But I, I still would like to understand, the, what is at risk, in terms of, you know, in terms of hard numbers? So not the, you know, based on approximately what we recall, but, and then through the parks and, you know, whatever we might get in the state park fees. I think that's just a number we just need to understand. I understand the part about not having it, let's say, go where we would, we would choose it to go, but, you know, certainly I think we can, at least I think, make a better decision if we understand what the, the risk is. And I understand the risk of a development being halted. Let's take the Olson Homes, for instance, that someone can say, based on not passing this, they can, they can cause that to be slowed down, I understand that. So certainly don't want those kind of things to happen, but we are kind of built out, so how much, how many more opportunities for that are we going to see in the city?
Mayor, if I might, though, we, right next door, we're hoping to have a major improvement someday. I think that's why we have to, we're doing this whole process, so we're not vulnerable to that. Now, that's, okay.
Part of the, yeah, the weighing it off. Now, neighboring cities, what are they doing? I, I recall that Seal Beach had something that was not accepted by the council, similar to this, right?
They had an affordable housing project that was voted down.
Okay, okay. Something different, then, not, not the housing...
They had actual building and structure that was proposed and turned down.
Okay.
Is that the 2-2 vote?
I think it was 2-2.
It came back and was approved on the floor one.
But that was a different location, though, too. They originally talked, you know, behind the shops at Rossmore, of, I believe, either allowing something new or converting those apartments back there into the affordable housing element. And I think they wound up with a different location, more downtown, along the, the river corridor.
But my real question, Dean, was, was, so is Seal Beach also looking at updating their housing element? And are they...
Oh, I mean, everybody in the SCAG region right now is working on their housing element update, which is supposed to be done by October...
Right, I remember that, okay.
Of, of this year. There were a number of cities in Orange County that did it wrong, that thought when they, it said they could limit beds, they limited to like 30 beds in the whole city, and HCT is, is not accepting those as being compliant, and they're going back and they're fixing what they did the first time.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions. Go back.
Actually, it's just a statement. I, I think that there's a, there's an understanding that if your community or your residents are, are in need, whether they're elderly, or become homeless because of the economy or circumstances, that just, you know, put them in a bad, a bad situation. I, I understand that the city of Los Alamos should take care of the residents of Los Alamos. My, my real rub with this is that we're, we're taking care of residents from other cities. And I think that, you know, if we're going to be addressing this and potentially looking into writing letters and such, I think that maybe lobbying on behalf of the fact that cities shouldn't have the expectation of housing other cities' residents, whether it's for transitional housing, or any of the other types of housing that were mentioned here, transitional, supportive, residential facilities, emergency shelter, single-room occupancy. I just think that we should all be expected to take care of our own, and I think we do that here well enough. And I don't know if that's something feasible. I don't get involved in a level much beyond Los Alamos and our local politics, but I certainly think that each city, each city should bear the weight of its own, and take care of its own.
I, I don't get that same feeling, so I'm, I'm on a different plan here, in terms of understanding what she presented to us, was that we have to have it on paper in order to be able to provide it, but it's not mandated, the city has to come in and create a homeless shelter.
Absolutely.
I didn't say we had to, I'm just saying, supporting it.
Well, you said, you said Los Alamos is taking care of our own.
What I mean, Dean, is, if these things are needed, and I understand, we don't have to provide for them, I understand it's, it's something that we have to provide for in, in our documentation, but we don't have to implement it, we're not involved in it at that level. I'm just saying that I know from the youth shelter and the others, those are not all people from Los Alamos.
Oh, absolutely not, yeah.
So what I'm saying is, I guess, just as a platform, that cities should take care of their own, and that's all I'm saying. I don't think we should be expected, in our numbers, to take people from different areas in order to accommodate. That's all.
I don't know, I mean, that's a good, good premise, but I don't know, do we have that ability to restrict it?
Didn't I just say I'm not sure if that's feasible or not, but it's something that we should look into and at least lobby for, if that's an option?
Oh, okay. I mean, I, I don't know that we can stop somebody from coming in, if they're, like, for example, CASA, or even Precious Life, and I'm a little bit more familiar with that, most of the people coming into those facilities are not from here to begin with, never have been.
That's my point exactly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Edger?
This is a form of education to the public. You know, the emergency shelter and the transitional housing element is the one that I think people are focused a lot on, who I talk to, for SB2 and the initiation. You know, we've said a couple things of, you know, theoretically, it's a paper exercise, so, you know, it has to have the zoning capability, but we're not creating it, the city's not a part of it, it's basically creating the free market, right? Can we go through an example of, somebody buys a home in New Dutch, Green Brook, Rossmore Highlands, four, four-bedroom house, and they want to come in, they buy it, they want to use it as transitional housing, they're going to convert the bedrooms. How is the city, forget the city council members, how would we be made aware that this is happening, or has happened? Or, or do the neighbors all of a sudden, since it's allowed and we can't stop it, or did all of a sudden we start wondering why there's eight cars at the house, and, and there seems to be a lot of medical and police action going on, but we really can't figure it out? Start from the beginning, a house is for sale, how would it turn into a transitional house?
The transitional owner would buy it, market rate. He wouldn't come to the city for any approvals.
You speak into the mic, because I just want to make sure that you hear this.
Somebody would buy the property outright, through a regular market transition, they would come, they wouldn't come into the city for any level of approval whatsoever unless they were doing construction on the property. And they would occupy the home the same way you and I and our families would occupy a home.
Even if it was a corporation that bought the house?
Even if it's a corporation. A corporation is allowed to buy property.
I know.
Now, if it's a residential care facility, an RCF, and they're, they have four seniors in there, they would be licensed by the state. You would find them on the state database as a registered place.
After the fact, after they applied to become a state facility?
Absolutely, yeah.
No public hearing on that, nothing, right?
Not whatsoever. It's just like a daycare center below seven kids, next door to your house. It's the same treatment.
Okay. And then if the community members around that house started getting to a point that they just could not tolerate the quality of life, were frustrated, what can a community do to, can they do anything at this point? Because I, to me, it's really important, preemptive and post, you know, we're all fearful of SB2, I'm just describing what I think could be the worst-case scenario, and we really aren't going to do anything to change that outcome, but what can you do post or pre, at this point? If you're a resident, and you see your next-door neighbor's home now turned into a transitional facility?
I think unless there are problems associated with the transitional facility that are above and beyond just a large family living next door to you, there's not going to be too much that they can do. Certainly, if there are a lot of nuisances, a lot of police calls, a lot of problems, then they could sue, I, I would think, under the private nuisance theory.
So theoretically, you could call the police in a lot, and complain, and raise the nuisance level, and more of a frictional approach than a policy approach?
If, if they were grounded, I mean, if the, the calls were actually grounded, I think just the number of calls, I mean, they would have to be based in, in fact, that there were some problems created by the home. But again, they'll be battling reasonable accommodation and fair housing laws.
Is there anything that we can do at this step, either by suggesting very respectfully to the Planning Commission to do something, or we as the council, to stop the scenario that I just explained?
Well, no, because state law already provides transitional and supportive housing is allowed in those zones, so it doesn't matter. I, I mean, HCD wants you to amend your code to specifically call it out, but it's as-of-right right now for transitional and supportive. And the emergency shelters, we put into a non-residential zone.
So, bottom line is, and I'm done, is that, I mean, this makes us feel good about talking about it, we really have no ability to influence it, and it, you know, it's something that's allowed by state law, so we should just accept it at this point, I mean...
Your hands are tied quite a bit by the state, and as I said, in a lot of those uses, they're already allowed, without being called out in, in your code.
Thank you.
Sure.
Last question, I promise. In the staff report, it talked about the only way to call out these houses before they're potentially created is what? And the staff report said...
Staff report, I didn't get a copy of...
You know what, Stephen, I'm sorry, I don't know what page. It talked about the only way that you could announce that there was going to be a group home or a transitional home, is if you were to announce every other change of occupancy, I think it was, within the city, right?
I think that may have been in the state's SB2 report.
It said that the only way that you could publicly say, hey, listen, this house is being proposed for a transitional home, say, is that if you don't already notice every single change of ownership, or something along those lines...
The, the rule is, transitional and supportive housing has to be treated exactly the same as all other residential uses in that zone, right? So if you publicly said every time, so, Jane Smith bought this house, then you could say, this, you know, they bought this house.
So you'd have to notice every transition, every time a place is purchased or sold, or any of those...
And I'm sure that would run into a whole host of legal arguments.
Right, so I just, I'm trying to say, for the, the people who are out there who are concerned about this, we've looked at this from every angle, and it seems like we're, our hands are tied, but that doesn't mean that in the future, we can't be lobbying for these changes to be made different.
Legislative changes are probably your best weapon.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay, just opening up for members of the public for a public comment. Any member pushing his theme?
Hi, I'm Mark DeBolt, I'm a resident of 3862 Denwood, Los Alamos. Have some familiarity with this.
Have some familiarity with this. Just a quick question of staff, in any of these facilities, are they required to have a business license?
Residential care facilities for elderly and state-licensed facilities, yes.
Only, they're the only ones, so anybody coming in and renting, I mean, I'm an apartment owner, I have to have a business license, and I have to pay for every unit that I have. And because I'm charging rent, I guess, I guess if we're free, I wouldn't have to have that. But if these people are buying, if this corporation or an individual is buying a four-bedroom home, you know, in Green Brook or somewhere else, and they're going to go ahead and open it to, let's say it's an unlicensed facility by the state, but they're going to be renting rooms out, are they required to have a business license in the city?
If they're running a business, they would be required to have a business license, but again, I'm not an expert on the business license procedure.
I mean, it would just seem to me that that might go to notifying everybody, I guess I would like to know if somebody's operating a business out in my neighborhood. So I guess we could notify people of business licenses that have recently been issued in the single-family, so, just a thought, okay, for notification. The other thing is, I want to comment on two things, one is the relaxation of the R three parking standards and the accommodations. And I think this will get to the heart of Mr. Eggers' very probative question that I think didn't quite get answered, okay? It might need a little further explanation from the way I understand it. And that has to do with process, okay, or the lack of it. And I'm of the opinion that we have to meet the standard, okay, like we're changing the zone, like we're doing what we're doing. But I don't think you give away that which you don't really need to give away immediately. And in particular initially is this relaxation of the R three parking standards. I don't recall ever seeing that at another meeting that I happen to be a part of, okay, I don't recall that, and I might be, you know, maybe went over my head. But our existing R three code, I think, should be left in place, period, okay? If somebody wants to come in and put a studio apartment in, then I think they should have to follow the same process as everyone else, okay? Except if they need an accommodation, because it's going to be for one of these classes that you're dealing with. I got a little bit to say here, I think you might want to hear it. So anyway, it would seem to me that that accommodation should be the exception. You keep your standards in place, but anybody who wants to come in and ask for a relief from the code, they should come in and there should be a process for which they would get relief, okay? Based on the fact-specific situation that they've laid out, okay? I can tell you right now, in Apartment Row, there are probably at least fifteen to twenty units that I know of, buildings that I know of, that were built in the seventies that have a very large laundry room that were all illegally converted to studio apartments in order to circumvent the city's parking code, okay? A lot of those have been found out, they've been closed down, those will probably now reopen under this, okay? And I think, I don't think you should change it, I think you should provide for the exception, okay? The next thing is in the accommodation area, under reasonable accommodations, who decides? And I think, I think there needs to be a little more, a little more clarity from the staff on the first bullet point. Community Development Director decides if no other discretionary permit is needed, and exactly what that means, that's a fine, fine line. It would appear to me if, if you need a discretionary permit, and this all goes under the heading, I'm going to digress just one quick sec. Mr. Mendoza was spot on in his, when he opened this, and that is that you're hearing this for the first time. What you don't want to do is have the residents coming in here in one of your meetings after having seen it for the first time and be demanding what's going on, you know, everybody's in the dark. But if there's going to be deviations or accommodations to our development standards, i.e. height limitations, encroachments into a setback, side setbacks, rear setbacks, increasing lot coverage, okay, we're going to expand the, expand, it's kind of the same thing, but expanding a house where you would normally have to come in with a CUP or some other type of discretionary permit, then, in my opinion, there needs to be a process for that, and that should either run, if it's specific to one of this, this housing, this portion of the housing element, these, you know, for disabled people or whatever we're dealing with here, if they're coming in with a request for an accommodation, that should run through the normal process. Planning Commission, if denied, or then appealed to the council, and it should go through a process. But the accommodation itself is the reason for the process. It's not a variance, because like the city attorney said, you can't get a variance to put a, you know, they tried to do that on the boulevard, or on one of the buildings down here, a commercial building, trying to get a variance to put an elevator on an outside of a building. They couldn't get it, it didn't change the topography or anything like that. But if they needed it for an accommodation, then that would be the reason that it would come through a process. And then you would have, and then have a body that would, the planning commission, or if it's just directly to the council, I mean, if going through the planning commission and then to the council creates potentially unreasonable hurdles, then, you know, that could be argued would be, you know, a method of discrimination, then don't go to the planning commission, go straight to the council. But you have a process where the developer, or one of the four parties there, has to come in and plead their case and their reasoning for the accommodation. Then you would have notice given to all of the residents and this type of a thing, that would, they would have to come in and the residents at least would be sitting out here, watching you while your hands are tied, so that, you know, or maybe not, maybe, maybe you ferret out that person who, you know, just wants to get some added square footage for his house, and then all of a sudden, the the reason for the accommodation disappears, and now he's got a, you know, an extra eight hundred square feet that doesn't have to be torn down or whatever. And that's another thing, I would, I would not, I personally don't agree with this notion of removal, you know, not removing a structure because it's economically not feasible or all of this. No, if you, if you come in and are worthy and genuinely need the accommodation, you need it, okay? If the time ends that you don't need that accommodation, then let's just say, the code is you have to remove it, but they can appeal to the council for the exception. And so on, and then so the council or the body makes the decision on the exception. Because if, you know, three months before when they applied, they needed the accommodation, now the house is built, you know, I have one month of running my board and care, or my home, and all of a sudden I decide I don't want it, so I'm going to convert it back to my residence, I probably ought to be required to tear the thing down. But I, rather than have them use the code that way, I mean, use it, in other words, make sure you have a process. I mean, because the public is going to be, they're going to be at the door, you know, I mean, and as far as is it economically viable? We just paid thirty-five hundred a month for my wife's aunt, she was one, a ninety-year-old lady with Alzheimer's, in a house, a four-bedroom house in Huntington Beach, and she's there with, I think, four other women, four or five, all at thirty-five hundred to four thousand a month. That's a lot of money, monthly, so just about anywhere, short of about eight hundred or nine hundred thousand, you know, you're going to, it works in just about every neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeBolt, any other members of the public?
Good evening, Jody Schloss, I have, I have some questions, because I'm really confused. I attended the Cypress housing element on April twenty-second, and it was a little bit different than our housing element, although you did a great job, Lisa, and I like your presentation much better, it was much more thorough than theirs. Although, in their minutes, and I actually recorded this meeting when I was there, I have a copy of it, if anybody wants to hear it, I can just give it to you. Two council members during the process of the presentation asked about penalties if non-compliant. And the consultant and staff said there are no penalties. So then when the public got to speak, I asked, probably what everybody else thought of at the same time, what about then later, when you want to have, you want a request for grant funds from the state? And they said, hmm, that's a good question, we'll get back to you on that, we have to discuss it and check around, and we'll get back to you on that. They never got back to me, they had my name, but they never got back to me on that, so I called them a couple of weeks ago, and I spoke with the planner in Cypress, and he said, we're compliant. So they needed three hundred and eight units, and there, there was indication, the way the council members were speaking, was that they are not going to really do anything. And actually, this is what was said, this is sort of a quote, that I, because I re-listened to the housing element this morning. The city does not have to build these houses, they just have to show that they are providing opportunities with zoning, and that the city is not placing barriers on this process. Which is pretty much what you're saying here, it's on paper, you just have to have it on paper, and basically, I just don't, I don't understand why the city of Los Alamedos, who has no open space to build anything, and even if there was something to be converted, would have to provide a hundred and twenty-one emergency shelter. I just, I don't understand that, because the city of Cypress, which is much bigger and does have open space, and they have a lot of, they do have a lot of units in their, in their city, because they have Lincoln. On Lincoln Avenue, there's all kinds of motels and different places that they provide for this. And because we have so many in Los Alamedos as far as we care, precious life, cost of youth and all of that, I think we are providing. And so I got the impression that you can say no, you can do it, and you won't have a penalty for it. And when I called back, they didn't indicate that they weren't going to be getting grant money down the road. So I know every city's different, and I just want to say that I think it would, might be worthwhile for staff to maybe research this a little bit further. Yeah, that's a question, and I think she was going to say something about it.
I can respond to all of the comments. First off, with regard to the comments that are raised on parking standards and giving away more than we have to. A, the housing element law says you have to remove impediments, you have to make reasonable accommodations. One of the things HCD said to do in your last go-around to make these reasonable accommodations and to provide for all segments of the housing from the, and they don't really care about market-level housing, HCD is concerned with the bottom three levels, moderate, low, and very low. They said one of the things you have to do is to relax the parking standards so that developers can get either more units on the property or reduce costs in providing parking spaces. That was something that the Los Alamedos Council in two thousand nine agreed to do in implementing its housing element. That's why HCD said, okay, if you do all these things, yeah, we approve your housing element, that everybody gets conditional approvals, you know, because nobody's spot on with nothing to do. So HCD gives everybody conditional approval, saying, yep, yep, if you do this policy, this policy, this policy, now you're approved. So that was one of the things that the city had committed to do. As far as who decides and the process and the accommodation, that is not mandated by state law. Staff, city attorney's office, we put something down as a starting point for you to discuss. So if you want to change the process on having all reasonable accommodations go before the planning commission, or having everything have to be removed unless you apply and go before the planning commission, then that's a process that can be changed. And that can go back to the planning commission, the changes, if the council directs those changes, and then come back to you. On the incentives for that housing element compliance, first, I want to differentiate between, A, it sounded in part what you're talking about, that Cypress was talking about, and I hate commenting on what another agency has done without having the benefit of being in the meeting and hearing and seeing everything they had. But certainly, the state gives you how many units you need to accommodate at your four levels of market, very low, low, and moderate income housing. And all you have to do, all the state wants to make sure that you've done, is to make sure that you can fit those units into your city. Be it by upzoning certain property, by putting in a mandatory minimum zoning, which one of the other cities I represent, they require that in certain zones, you can't build less than twenty units per acre, you could go to thirty, but you have to have at least twenty. So there are all different ways that HCD looks at each individual city and says, this is how you're going to get there. Actually, Los Alamedos, I think, had less than a lot of other cities to get there. So all you have to do is say, we've removed the barriers, and here are the zones that can go in and see we've got it. So they're absolutely right, there's no penalty whatsoever if the houses don't get built, there's no penalty whatsoever if the homeless shelters don't get built, the transitional, the supportive housing. You just have to remove the barriers to, so that somebody can come in and do that. However, there are certain mandates that the state has set, and one of those is you must make one zone available as of right in the city that can accommodate your homeless need. Again, the city's homeless need was identified at one twenty-one, the consultant who prepared the last one just used the same methodology as the county had used, the one percent, well, if there's one percent homeless countywide, we're going to assume we have one percent homeless. You could change that number in the next go-around if there was empirical data to support less than one percent. You'd still have to provide one zone as of right where the units could go. Now, maybe that means it could be a smaller zone where you couldn't get as many units, if you were dealing with a different city, or create a sub-zone in perhaps a larger city where there was a lot of land to do. a larger city where there was a lot of land to do that, saying, well, we don't need to make all of, you know, the C-three, or whatever zones some city may have available, we can reduce it down, because we only need to make sure there's space for a hundred units. Los Alamos isn't that big, geographically speaking, so there's not as much playroom. But as far as the incentives and the loss factor, I, I can hand you the printout right off HCD's website, that was from two thousand nine, that are the incentives, and essentially the punishments, you know, for housing element compliance, that, um, to incentivize and reward local governments that have adopted compliant and effective elements, infrastructure funding programs require you to have these funds, they rank you, and having a compliant housing element is a big, either a big-point getter, or an automatic, you don't even get to play. City that applies for like a, what's called a home, H-O-M-E loan, to do like gap financing for affordable housing units, you don't even get to apply for the home loan, or the state NOFA, the, the, I can't, oh, two-oh-two funds, or something, if you don't have that compliant housing element. So, there are not penalties in the sense that will come and punish you, that comes from somebody who wants to make you an example, a community housing advocate, who says, okay, you know, somebody's, somebody's going to be up there and be our poster child for bad city that we're going to go after. Somebody who, as I said, wants to stop another type of project, to say, okay, we'll just say you have a, you know, if we could go after Cypress, I'd say, you don't have a good general plan, you can't approve, you know, your development over there. But they do take away rewards, so however you want to phrase it, it's definitive, you can lose your funding.
Thank you. I, I think that if that's the case, that maybe then the people of Los Alamos might want to vote whether they want the money for the grant funds, or whether they want to have the, the housing, that type of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so bring you back to the council. Any other questions, comments?
Just, so, I think what was clarified there is that the housing element, I, you know, I was here for the two thousand nine, I can't distance myself from that vote. I will tell you personally, I was very focused on the RENA requirements, which is the number of units. And, and there was a lot in that package, so if the one-twenty-one slipped by, you know, I would, I mean, something that was just mentioned, I, I mean, look at the facts, right? Ross, or Rossmore, Cypress has fifty-two thousand people, but the RENA number was thirty, three-hundred. We, you know, that's not ten, or one percent. So, you know, something doesn't seem, you know, like it's mechanical, so just on a discretionary, could we go and evaluate that? I, I think I would be supportive, you know, to try and get staff to evaluate that, and when is the timeframe? Because, you know, theoretically, again, we can go back and get that RENA, or not the RENA, but the, the, the percentage down to a half a percent, or something. I mean, we've got, what is the total number of houses, or units that we have already? It's just the same way we manage RENA, it's like, we looked at the back of the envelope, and we tried to balance, okay, how can we get credit for what we got? And then, you know, and if Cypress is using Lincoln Boulevard as a mitigation to find three-hundred units, we should be using our section to be able to do that.
In a way, you do get credit for what you have, because if you say, well, we already provide thirty-nine beds in the city, then you only have to show space for, oh, God, my math is going to be terrible, eighty-two more beds, not the full, that, you know, space for a hundred-and-twenty-one, if somebody came and said, where, show me how you're going to put in a hundred-and-twenty-one units, and you say, oh, I can come up with eighty.
Right.
Well, that's all you have to come up with, because you already have existing shelters.
But if Cypress factored down, they're doing almost a little over half of a percent versus one percent, so.
Time to do that is, again, the next housing element, the, a lot of cities have already submitted the drafts, your housing element, the deadline is to adopt within a hundred-and-twenty days after October first, not, you know, we all know cities don't necessarily meet that. I think yours was adopted in two thousand nine for the two thousand eight go-around. I had another city that was two thousand eleven, and turned around less than twelve months later, and started working on the new one, because it took that long to get theirs by HCD. But that's the place, i-if there's data to support it, to reanalyze it. You don't go back and fix your last housing element, you change the number in the forthcoming housing element.
So a strategy could be that we utilize a theory that we're going after to adjust our one-twenty-one down to a more reasonable number, adjust it, and use Cypress as an example of, it can be done. No matter what that is, it'll be less than one-twenty-one. We take inventory of the thirty-five or forty units we have, and it's the delta between that, and our strategy is that we're going to work on our compliance towards that. And our one-zone is our, yeah, our zone over off of Reagan Street, that's already giving us some credits. So that we're not trying, you know, so basically, to meet the requirement, one zone designated in the city, that we're almost eighty-five, ninety percent there on the new modified one-twenty-one number, seems like a strategy. I'm also very supportive of what Art had talked about with the process impediments. I, I think that's, that's exactly where, you know, you don't want to say no, we're not trying to be prejudicial, but I think, you know, can't make it as easy as, you know, as long as we have a process in place, let the process work through the procedure of, you know, as long as it's in there, it can be evaluated against a process by the commission or the city council. I think that's a great idea.
We can redraft that, so that the reasonable accommodation requests go to planning commission, instead of to the, the community development director's staff level, if there's nothing discretionary. Again, that's not mandated by state. We just need to give you a starting point to direct us where to go with it.
That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Do you know how close we are to the one-twenty-one at this point?
As far as what?
Having enough beds for the one-twenty-one. How close are we?
No, how many beds do we currently provide? It's just, it's like thirty-seven, thirty-nine.
So that's close enough. That's close enough. So we're eighty short. Okay.
Not really. Because if you add in Don's Turf Motel, if they're crediting the hotels and stuff along Cotella.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and in the Turf Motel, you add in Best Western, in terms of accommodations, those are going to be applicable the same way.
And that would depend if your SROs and your things could go into the, the zone in which the hotels are going into, as-of right.
Well, and not only that, but you might want to check with some of the churches, because I know that, that Grateful Hearts finds housing for homeless in the motels for a temporary amount of time, I'm not sure what that is, or if it would be enough time to qualify, but those are some other things that we could look at as far as meeting our numbers.
Now that Dean stole my idea, that's okay, I'll go on. I'll go on to removal of improvements. I, I'm concerned on this issue, because, you know, you really see, especially on a scrupulous person, could take a smaller, let's say, a carrier row home at twelve-hundred square feet, and say, well, you know, we can't get upstairs anymore, we need an eight-hundred square foot master suite downstairs with a new bathroom, and all of a sudden now, your twenty-five percent value, you've added eight-hundred square feet to a twelve-hundred square foot home, you're, you can't make them take it out, as we've written this. So I would like to see that we could, we could take it out.
I think it's the cost, cost to take it out would exceed twenty-five percent of the value, not that you're removing twenty-five percent value of the home, but the, the actual cost. The other thing is, when somebody comes in and makes a request, they're, they have to submit documentation. I, I mean, they'd have to come in with proof of disability, and it wasn't, you know, that somebody really couldn't get up the stairs. I haven't seen a lot of reasonable accommodation requests come through in the cities that I've worked at. I don't think you've had them here in, in one form or another. And in fact, when I researched them to try and find examples, most reasonable accommodation requests in, in the area of housing have more to do with dealing with your apartment manager, or somebody, you know, I need to have the guide dog, I need to have the dog that brings me my medicine, it's a no-pet apartment, so you have to allow that type of reasonable accommodation.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's more where those come into play than, as I said, the few examples I cited you on, on the city policy. I've never seen an elevator request. I think maybe we've had one to slightly encroach into a side yard setback with a, a ramp to get in. But it's not a huge frequency that I've seen in my practice.
That's all. Jury has it?
Just want to start off by saying, and I've said this before from the dais, this is the problem with getting accustomed to taking money from grants and CDBG and Measure M., because it locks us into certain things that we don't want to do. And like Ms. Schloss says, maybe we need to revisit that, along with Councilwoman Redger also brought that up. I would like to have us decide whether or not, in this process, this process that Mr. DeBolt talked about, whether or not should become, coming before the planning commission for those accommodations, or the city council. And the reason I say that is because if there is, in the staff report, it talked about unreasonable delays, you know, to try and deter people from doing these things, I don't want us to fall into that kind of situation, if it goes to the planning commission, and then we meet once a month, and, and it just could get us into one of those positions where we're putting ourselves in harm's way. So I would like to at least entertain the idea of it coming straight to the planning commission, I'm sorry, straight to the city council, and not the planning commission for the accommodations, just to look at whether or not it might be better for us to look at it right away, or the planning commission. That's just something I think that we should take into consideration. Now, if a, if a family was to take an elderly member into their home, say a parent or a grandparent, and they have to enlarge the home, the size of the home doesn't matter, because that's not within our city code, but let's say that our, we go to a no-mansionization type deal. Would that person then be expected to remove that room, or the room in the bathroom that was built to accommodate the elderly person, even if it's a, you know?
If it's, well, if it's within the city code, and it doesn't exceed any standards, then they wouldn't be coming in for reasonable accommodation. If you don't have requirements that, that say you can only have X-FAR, or so many square feet on the code, then they don't even, they just come in for a regular building permit to expand their house. So you're not even in that reasonable accommodation. It's not till they say, maybe I'm pushing into your, the setback, and now I, I can't qualify for a variance.
Right. Well, no, that's, go ahead.
Also, elderly is not disabled necessarily, so, two different standards.
Okay.
Doesn't matter if they're old, but if they're disabled.
Well, let's say they're old and disabled, okay? I'm feeling a little disabled, and I'm only forty-nine, so. I guess what I'm trying to say is, some of this makes good sense, like your example of the elevator, it's very extreme, but nevertheless. It just doesn't make any sense to me that if they were, let's say we did have a mansionization code, and someone had to come to us for an accommodation for someone who's elderly and disabled, and they enlarged their home, it's a beautiful modification, it seems silly to me that if, in some point, they're going to sell that home down the line, that they would have to remove that addition. So, I mean, does it have to be a standard rule? I mean, I could see saying, remove a ramp. I could see saying, remove certain things. But a whole addition to a home seems a little draconian for me. You like that?
And, and I think there, there's a divergency of view between, the planning commissions seem very concerned of making sure anything that was exceeded the development standards would go, and, and saying, start banging out your walls and knocking out bathrooms. So which is why we tried to come up with this standard, that the cost of removal would be twenty-five percent of the value. Certainly, somebody can always appeal that decision, or they could apply for a variance if there were any specific conditions of the property that would allow them to keep it under a variance.
Okay.
Standard. But that's why we tried to come up with something that there would be some level, and twenty-five percent was simply pulled off of, you know, what another city had used that value, there's nothing magical about that value.
Well, as long as there's a process for them to come forward, and some logic be applied, I mean, obviously, if there's a ramp, and there's no longer a need for a ramp, great. But as long as there's a process for them to come forward and say, hey, we built this addition for this reasonable accommodation, which was justified, now the person's passed away, you're not going to expect them to tear down half the house. That just seems silly to me. So, there was one more thing, I think I have. I, I guess that's it.
Any other questions, comments? Dean, you have something?
I have one, one question for staff. The changes that we're doing now are going to fit within the general plan changes that come up, is that correct?
If, these changes will be in our zoning code.
How, the housing element that you adopt, should you adopt it when it comes before you, will be a section of the general plan?
But there, there'll be compatibility, we're not going to have to go back and redo the general plan, based on what we're doing here.
No, if approved by the state and the city council on the planning commission, the housing element will be good, hopefully, for eight years.
The comment was relative to mandates that are coming down from the state. And last Friday, I attended the League of California Cities, Orange County Division meeting, where we had Assemblyman Travis Allen and State Senator Lou Correa speak. And one of the things that Lou Correa talked about was what the governor is doing within his budget, and how he's moving to push things down the pipe, if you will, toward the local cities. Personally, I don't have a problem with more local control, but I want some of the mandates that they pushed at us, give it us some flexibility in the process. What the senator said is, and the discussion was a very healthy discussion, he wants to hear from the electants that are in his district, and is talking about doing some brown bag lunch meetings, because he finds a smaller group like that, with elected officials telling him what he can do in his last two years, basically, up there in Sacramento, are going to be very helpful. And, and I took that to mean that we're going to be seeing, for example, they want the threshold for raising taxes lowered, to make it easier for local government to be able to raise taxes. So the, the good news, bad news is, no longer is the state going to do, go after tax increases, they're going to make us do it, and make us the bad guys in the process. Yet they're not really, as I see it, going to be giving us any latitude for how business is done, and still continue to push these kinds of things down the pipe. So, from the standpoint of my colleagues on the council, I think we need to take advantage of that kind of an offer, and be able to go over to Correa and say, here's the real problems that we have, in terms of this stuff coming down. It, it isn't so much raising of the taxes, we don't like that any more than, than they do. But you got to stop doing this kind of stuff. You got to start, quit binding us, and restricting us from the standpoint of how we do things, and let us have that local control that's needed. So, I gave you a report back on, on the dialogue that did occur, but I just wanted to let you know, he's saying, because of what the governor's doing, they're now talking about lowering the threshold from the standpoint of tax raising, so that it can be done more eas, more easily in the local, in the local jurisdiction, instead of the two-thirds, bringing it down to fifty-plus-one, et cetera. And, so just so you're aware of what's coming.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gross. Okay, so I think to the council, to staff, I think, just to summarize, if I can just head nods, on the process to adjudicate the, the reasonable accommodation request, I think we want to have that retooled. Is that kind of the sentiment here? And, so, is that clear enough direction to staff?
To the city council.
From the city council, yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, is it council, or is it planning commission? Is there, can we just do a straw, straw poll? How do we want the council?
Does it have to go back to the planning commission, changes from here, report comes back to us?
I think city council has the authority of amending changes here.
Can I make the changes?
Right. You would just give staff direction here. Next week will, I mean, and the nineteenth is an action item.
Yeah. So, I guess first stop is, for the reasonable accommodation request, council or commission? That's a, that's a question.
In all due respect, I, I'm advocating more for the planning, because I think it adds another staff.
Okay. So planning?
I would say the same thing.
Planning?
Let me just ask one question. With regard... With regards to what the staff report said about unreasonable delays and such like that, if they come for a special accommodation, it goes to the Planning Commission, they look at it, then it has to come before us for us to go, okay, we, we support that too. That's not unreasonable and it's not going to look at, be looked at as a delay, is it?
The Planning Commission's just going to make a recommendation that's already going go to the count, that's automatically going to go to the council? That's different, I think, than your other procedures. I mean, outside of a general plan or a zone change, aren't most things approved by the Planning Commission, subject to an appeal?
Right.
So the argument could be made, you've put in a different process.
Okay. I'm talking about a faster process, so we're not accused of delay.
Right, I'm saying it, and this seems to me a slower process to go, Planning Commission makes a recommendation, then it also has to go to the City Council for approval.
But it's a consistent process, like garbage. Go to the Planning Commission if you make it through, good luck. If not, you appeal it.
Well, I'm hearing two different things. One is appealable to the City Council, and the other is it's automatically going to the City Council.
I think it's a formative.
I'm just asking.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission adjudicates, and if they can't get satisfaction, then they come to the council on appeal.
And that's not considered an unreasonable delay, is all I was worried about. Okay, okay, great. So that's fine, Planning Commission's fine then.
That's the direction to staff, I think, on that one.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any motion necessary.
This is for discussion only, asking questions, let's see, it says, I mean, it's review, discuss and ask questions, so no action is really required or permitted under this agenda.
Okay. So then we'll go ahead and close this item, and before we adjourn to a closed session, I just want to go back to items 3B and 3C on the consent calendar. Were there any members of the public that wanted to speak on those items? Seeing them, we'll go ahead and close public comment on those items, and then what question?
Could we just have a real quick report on the coyote issues that, just if we've taken any action on meeting with fish and game and that kind of thing? Just a brief report, Greg.
Okay, the, Cassie has put out some signs, and then she has had some meetings about getting ready to, to maybe do some trapping and to keep a close eye on it and be very diligent with it.
I just know people are, are really worried, they've seen the headlines, and so I wanted us to at least address it very briefly here, so that they know that we're, it's on our radar.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll go into closed session. We'll take a, how about a 10 minute recess?
And are you going to come back before going into closed session, or shall I announce it now?
Go ahead and announce it now.
Okay, the council will go into closed session to discuss the employment of a permanent city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 after the 10 minute recess.